So, do you know if Quinn was still planning on?
Yeah.
He is, uh... He hasn't joined yet, so... More, we didn't switch his spots.
Hello there, everyone. We did get 298 bags of walnuts, Ken.
Did you do the whole course?
I ordered 240. Unfortunately, it came in 75 bag pallets, so she ordered four pallets. And I picked up three pallets worth the first time. And I put them down and took them. I had to do it. And I went back and got 40 more bags. And I went back and got 20 more bags. And I packed up the last 15 bags, and some lady had slipped in and brought two bags. I left two bags and put them down, four pallets.
Rubber, it's shredded tires. Till the next Monday. How heavy are each bag?
Well, it kind of depends on if it's been raining.
It's been dry weather.
It's not that bad. Like waiting for things. And you're wired. I'm picking up.
Did you have been carrying two at the time?
I think so.
All right. I ask myself those kinds of questions more and more.
Right here.
I mean, I'll be sure. This is getting started all. No, he's affected too.
Do a good thing, grab my mask on. So you're getting your same job all over the place?
Oh, you're fine. Don't worry about Quinn. Our Zoom, our Zoom call.
You're in person.
It's cute.
Good night, Katie.
Yeah, well, welcome back.
So what, uh... What are you doing?
I got...
Good. Saw that action. I, uh... Well, she said you were coming to talk. I just started.
But this is your attorney in college, or something else.
There's a bunch of special office. Yeah, Chris, uh, Chris Monahan reading. June 6th.
That's just kind of logic behind it.
He, uh...
Yeah, I think so.
Chris and Jamie are both up and around.
Chris for social distancing.
Yeah, they're very, very strong in their own part of the country.
Is it normal? Did you get your order? Yes. Good evening, everybody. Can I get a little word, Ken?
Sure.
Sure, I don't want that.
You got eight minutes.
Eight minutes?
You got time.
Oh, hey, that's... Feel better. Sure. Yep, okay. I'd love to see the actual track up for next time, so I can get that.
I can't catch the eagle that hard, did you?
Yeah.
That's almost got seven days since it's faced, too.
Okay. It's a good evening, more than you've joined yesterday.
Oh, I don't know about that. I want to have trees in this.
It's only marginal, so you're gonna hear.
Oh, you guys got a hard part of it. CJ's kind of the same old CJ. So, uh, everybody enjoyed this one day.
Saw that.
It was a good day to fly a kite and grab a suit.
She's going, what's it?
One second, it was beautiful. Let's meet here and try and catch a cab sliding down the park.
Good.
In more places than not, had those signs that, gee, the COVID, it hurt for us.
Mm, that's like good enough time to catch up.
Yeah.
It's like I did my next talk, because I didn't do the COVID, I can't come through.
Well, calling it still charging.
Yeah, I don't want to do it over the phone. I already had two of those, which is just on the... It's funny, when I'm talking, I almost fall, so... Yeah, they still sit big meal, it's like...
Yeah, next time you're up, I'm going.
Let them personally watch that actions. Not all actions, really. Something like that.
If I age, you'll, you'll understand.
Unfortunately, sometimes it starts to never do. Hey, Caitlin, if you do watch your extra hours.
It could be on this side of the room.
What are you doing, right? You're off the play out there. Wife got you a friend, Karen. I must replace her, like, they had a box of those, and the other going back forth. Most people weren't learning, you know, good ass.
We get, you can't see them a little.
I'm gonna say this. Couldn't see anything, I'm feeling great.
Doesn't look like it, it's scattered, yeah. Or, or...
If it's never to see it, then we didn't buy it in this store. Shouldn't have bought it in this store.
Yeah, a little bit. I'm just scared, that's what I'm...
I don't, I don't blame you. I don't really.
Think about it. It's not, it's no, it's... It affects the...
Boy, he just threw out there, well, then I'm... Now, my heart doctor, he didn't mind, but with Zoom. And I know I'm still gonna be doing it, so I don't know how that works.
Did he give you a test?
The key, I got a machine and everything, and, uh... Yeah, he was actually, you know, before we started, and then he made me do, you know, some exercise.
Time is seven o'clock, and I... I collect the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just can't ask if you'd call the board, please.
David Burris.
Here.
Ray Echeppe.
Here.
Bill Lucas.
Here.
Bob Nelson.
Here.
Ron Richard.
Here.
Allison Ritter, here, Ray Romi.
Present.
Kayla Turner.
Yes, thank you.
And we do have a quorum. And the first item is to, uh... Approve the agenda. I'd ask for a motion to do so.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It moved in second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, agenda is approved, and again, I remind each council member to, uh... If there is a conflict of interest, please notify the entire council prior to voting on an item. We also have in your packages, uh... The minutes from the May 4th council meeting. I'd ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 4th council meeting.
Second.
It moved in second to approve the minutes of the May 4th council meeting. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, minutes are approved. You have in your packages bills in between for $137,321.10. I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve bills in between for the amount of $137,321.10.
Second.
It moved in second to approve the, the bills in between. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, those in between are approved. At current claims for $17,442.09, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve current claims for $17,442.09.
It moved in second to approve those current claims. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We move on to communications from the public. We have with us tonight Quinn Neff, uh... A District 30 House Republican candidate. Of course, you know, Quinn, if you'd have been running for the Senate, you wouldn't be allowed to speak there, right?
I would've guessed that.
Yeah. And we're glad to have you here.
Well, I'm glad we don't have nine council members in Keystone, or we couldn't fit them all in our community center down there, so... Anyway, I just wanted to come down to your meeting, just introduce myself, uh, give a little background. Name's Quinn. I grew up in Hill City. I live in Keystone. I went to high school there in Hill City and worked in tourism and timber and excavating industries growing up. Graduated from School of Mines with a degree in interdiscovery sciences and work in the mineral industries as a consultant now, as a exploration field technician and doing community relations, so... Uh, my background, I'm on the Keystone Town Board, so I'm familiar with a lot of the same issues you guys are with the communities and infrastructure funding and workforce challenges and... And then, uh, you know, I have some experience at the federal level. I worked for Senator Mike Grounds for two years, was a constituent service rep. And even myself, back then, I didn't really know what you, what you do working for a senator and found out it's not political at all, it's just helping people, doesn't matter what political affiliation. So about 50% of my time, I spent helping veterans with all sorts of issues ranging from billing to ER visits and who covers what and collection agency stuff, and then... The other 50% was natural resource issues with Forest Service and DLM, things like that, so... Got a kind of a diverse background and range from government to, to logging and minerals, so... I just wanted to come down and introduce myself, and, you know, I think part of running for District 30 is knowing your communities that are in there, and it's not just individuals, but the towns in them. So I look forward to, to winning, hopefully, and represent some of the issues we have as communities out here, so... Thanks for the time. If you have any questions, I have some, I gave you guys some information, it's got my contact on it, and so appreciate the time.
Okay, thank you, Quinn. Anybody have any questions for Quinn?
No, I just appreciate you actually taking time to go to the different communities.
Yeah, no problem. I always appreciate it when someone comes to our meetings, so... Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Quinn, and, and, uh, again, uh, I echo Dave's remark, we appreciate you being here, showing an interest in, in Hot Springs. Are there any other communications from the public? Okay, we've got one, go ahead.
Um, I was just informed, I may be the bad guy, I hate doing this.
Can you give us your name, please?
Valerie Henry, uh, within Power Coalition. But I was just informed that there's gonna be a prom on May 30th. I understand the kids want to have a prom and everything, and I was told that the city approved having it at Chautauqua Park. And so, being the bad person, I have to ask, what kind of safety measures are you putting in place? Um, I was told there's gonna be law enforcement there, but they're not supposed to be in uniform. And then, my worst concern is that they have a hypnotist, which is awesome, from Sioux Falls coming here. You know, we're an elderly town, I mean, we're the veterans' town, we have a lot of senior citizens. You could have one person come from Sioux Falls, and we could beat Minnehaha County. So I just had a few concerns, I just wondered if you could answer some of those questions. I, it was the first I heard that they were having a prom, I didn't see it in any of the minutes, so I didn't know.
Okay, uh... It's been discussed in, with public safety, and I don't know, uh, Bill, if you wanna add any?
Well, actually, uh, the, the sponsor, uh, came to Admin Finance and discussed that our police department had expressed a number of concerns around security, since it is not a school-sponsored event, it is a privately sponsored event. The city became involved in that, it, uh, the sponsoring organization reserved Chautauqua Park. Um, our concerns, the police department's concerns were, uh, what, what will be the security? Will there be any security because...
Alcohol, drugs, or...
Alcohol and drugs, and...
And COVID-19, you know, we have 10 people limited in stores, so I was kind of surprised we're gonna allow over 100 people.
The, uh... The, uh, provisions they have in place is that they do have a, uh... A certified South Dakota law enforcement officer that will be, uh, hired as private security and charge of security. Uh, in addition to that, they will have a number of Legion riders that will be assisting them, so that they will be checking folks in. Uh, they'll also have them stationed so that folks can't slip in from, uh, non-standard access points. Um, and they'll be patrolling to make sure that things stay in line, that, that drinking is not taking place. And they'll be managing social distancing and, and the typical guidelines as best they can. And since we'll be out of doors, uh... That's, you know, that will help. Uh, so, uh, with that...
What's your stance on the hypnotist from Sioux Falls coming here?
Quite frankly, when you said that, that's first I'd heard of it. Uh, I would hope that they would, uh, make sure that person is healthy. And, you know, that there's no symptoms manifesting, that the person doesn't run a temperature, that they would do, uh, that Kim will do a check on that person just like they would any other person, but, uh... You know, certainly, it's not a city-sponsored event, it's not a school-sponsored event, um... I, I understand your concerns, but...
I feel bad for the children, I mean, I do, of course, this has to be the worst year ever, you know? No graduation, other than what you guys did for them in the city, and not having a prom, but ultimately, I think our safety and their safety is really important, so I just had to ask these questions, so...
We appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and, uh, obviously, one of the other things that, uh, you know, if the situation changes in our community, we do have the mechanism in place to be, be able to call a, an emergency meeting, and by resolution, either, uh, make more stringent or loosen the, uh, the requirements. And, uh, the prom committee is aware that that, uh, that is always a, a potential. We, and, and to answer your question, a lot of people coming here, we cannot, uh, you know, prevent or...
No, I just thought, since the city approved it coming, I was just, I was surprised that with the city okaying it, that the city would not be more concerned about, like, in Hot Springs, they have a post-prom committee. And the only reason we have a post-prom committee is to provide a safe place, kids can't come in there drinking, they can't leave once they come.
Sure.
Everything else, because historically, there's been problems for decades, that's why they started it decades ago, having post-proms to, you know, keep kids safe on that, 'cause it's a party night, you know, and... So it concerned me on that aspect, and then, you know, with the city approving it, I just wondered if you guys were gonna make sure that there was security or, or whatever, that was my concern.
Yeah, and they're, they are, you know, we did ask those questions, and, and you've heard the, uh, arrangements that have been made. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Valerie?
Yes.
Over here.
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to add a few comments. I agree with everything that, you know, Bill has said, as far as the, uh, precautions that Kim has taken, she may have some other comments she wants to, uh, respond to you with. Two things I'd like to talk about, the, the 10 people. Uh, the city has amended our ordinance to say that we're not limiting businesses to 10 people, we're limiting them to however many will fit in their physical space and maintain the, uh... The six foot.
Right.
So we're not applying any different standards there. Uh, Kim has been very open about sharing, uh, everything that she's doing and recognizing that, uh, the social distancing may be the more difficult part of that. Uh, I plan on being there to help out wherever I can. The hypnotist coming from Sioux Falls, uh, as Bill said, that's the first time we've heard about that. I'll trust that Kim understands the concern, and that is the hot spot for South Dakota. That she understands those concerns, we'll do everything she can to ensure that, uh, if that hypnotist is on site, that they're as healthy as...
Yeah.
As, as you and I.
As any of us, anyway, to our knowledge.
We, and we talked about the fact that it would be easy for the city to find a lot of reasons to say no, but as you had talked about, this has been a lousy year for the kids. So we at least need to give them an opportunity to step up as, as adults and say thank you for allowing us to, uh, put this on. Uh, and my expectation is it'll, it'll be an event that, uh, they'll remember as best they can, and will, will come off okay.
Well, there's, I'd also like to add, there's lots of resources out there, she needs other people to, like, help, uh... What's the word, chaperone, um, things like that, we've had PVPs at post, at post-prom before. Um, we could still provide some of that to the coalition, things like that, if she needed that, um, people, she could contact me, I can put her in contact with people as well, so... People, she could contact me, I can put her in contact with people as well. Just anything to ensure their safety the best we can, you know, within our needs. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Kim, did you want to say something?
Yeah. Coming along way there.
Yes, please.
As most of you know, I'm Kim Moyer, and this is the prom president, Sidney Bogner. And yes, thank you for your concerns, Valerie. We've addressed them to the best of our ability.
I just heard about it today. No more.
So in speaking with, reference to the hypnotist that she is speaking with, there were two hypnotists. One originally at the school, when it was their function for this year, had hired a hypnotist. With everything being canceled, of course, he was canceled. When I reached out to Sidney and we're going back and trying to get busy event schedules for the kids, I did reach out to that hypnotist. He's down in Utah. And I thought, why don't we reach local? And so we checked with some hypnotists up in the Rapid City area. The one that entertains for this type of stuff, yes, he is from Sioux Falls. However, he has been in Wyoming and out there for the last, I don't know, six, eight weeks. You come to the event, you can check him. We'll definitely take his temperature if that's what would make you feel a little more comfortable. But that was my concern as a mom as well, is, oh, Sioux Falls area. But he hasn't been out in that area. And he's actually coming through Friday, Saturday thirtieth. He's coming through Friday night. So he's going to spend an extra day in just the area, just to hold out, just to come do this event for the kids. With that being said, we can't stop people from traveling or wherever they're coming and going. I mean, we have deliveries coming in. All we can do is the best we can do. He does, he is aware of the concerns that the city has. I'm totally liable for it. I've signed a contract with them. I've released the city. I did send over a release liability as well to the city of Hot Springs. Did y'all get a copy of that? Yes. Okay. So my knowledge, we've covered everything. You had mentioned the PVT. If you guys have those, I know the officer.
If you're going to have an officer there, he probably does. We also do it. Needing volunteers just to help walk around and stuff. It's not about catching the kids doing something wrong, it's about making sure they're good.
Correct. We've got about a dozen chaperones currently. If you would like to come help and be a part of it, we're not going to turn help away. The more, the merrier. And I think the more involvement, the better. We do have a lot of community support on this. Other local businesses have donated, donated. Again, I just, you know, we're doing this for the kids. So I appreciate your comment on that as well, so. Are there any other questions or concerns you have?
Nope, just what I just said.
I think if there are other concerns, you can get together personally. Are there any other communications from the public?
Mayor, I'd like to say something about this.
Sure, go ahead.
As far as the city knowing about it, some of the city might have known about it until I got a phone call half hour before the meeting. I knew nothing about it.
Nothing about what?
The dance.
We don't typically share park reservation information at council meetings.
Yeah.
And that's fine, but it isn't just this. I feel like a mushroom as a councilman this time. First time I knew everything that's going on. Right now, I feel like a mushroom. Half the stuff I never find out until the meeting.
Well, we've been at community.
Congratulations, and I'm glad you're doing this.
Thank you. Is that it?
Yeah, thank you. Any other communications from the public?
Yeah, I see a little later on in your meeting, you're going to be discussing your police cars and your decals and stuff. I guess, I kind of feel that we promote ourselves as a veterans' town, and I don't understand why our police cars are not decorated with a nice-looking decal package, a very patriotic and a very legible decal. I don't understand why we would not do something like that. So I guess, I'm kind of thinking maybe the Public Safety Department maybe should kind of rethink this and maybe look at different options. I've seen a lot of towns where their police cars are decorated, I mean, just, they have some really neat decal packages for, you know, something patriotic. I guess I'm kind of at a loss as we consider ourselves a patriotic town, and why wouldn't we decorate our cars as such? I didn't know if you guys were going to talk about this later, so that's why I thought I'd come up now during the public comment. I guess, maybe we can talk about it later, I don't know. But I guess, I just, I seen that, I read that, and I thought, well, I think you guys should really think about that. Because I've had a lot of comments from a lot of people about our current decal package. People don't like it. I mean, thank you.
Thanks, Wes.
Thank you, Wes.
Wes, I plan on having some comments during the motion that you're talking about. There is an executive session between.
Well, I don't know if I'm going to be able to stay, that's why I wanted to go ahead.
Yep. And I don't know how long that will be, but yes, I hope there will be a discussion about it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other communications from the public? I see someone coming forward.
Hi, guys. Donald, I want to share with you guys a perspective you're not going to get, I don't believe, anyplace else, when it comes to the decal package or identification thereof, your patrol cars. Thanksgiving afternoon, after everybody left my mother's house, except for her and I, there was a big crash at the back door. This was around four thirty. I get up to go to the back door to see what's going on. There's a guy on his hands and knees inside the back door with the back door not closed. And asking what he was doing there. He said, they're going to kill him. He was running from somebody. So my first response was, now what? I did have an advantage. He was down about three steps in a small empty way in the back of the house. So I reached into the broom closet, got, happened to be a ball retriever about four foot long, had a steel pipe handle on it. Figured I could, you know, maybe do some battle if he came to that. Then proceeded to call nine-one-one. Got dispatch, told them I needed an officer, had a guy come through the back door of the house. They said they would dispatch the officer. So I'm, this guy's telling me now, he's running, he's been looking for the cops to help him. Then to the sheriff's department, said he'd been turned away. There was a pickup chasing him. I said, well, where'd you come from? My mother's house is at the end of Canton Avenue, behind Lynn's Dakota Mark, where it dead ends. So right against Battle Mountain. He said, I came from over there. He pointed to the north. I'm thinking, where did he come from from over there? Well, anyway, I decided I want the officer to come to the back door, so I called nine-one-one again and asked him to have some contact. Afterwards, there's some discussion. I wondered why they didn't stay on the line with me to assess the situation that we had in the home. I planned on leaving earlier. I'm really glad I didn't. So I didn't get a call back, but afterwards, I kept looking at my phone, and I think, I don't know what was going on. My cell phone went to some kind of mode, and I don't know how nine-one-one works, and it may have been tracking or, I don't know. Anyway, I didn't get a call back, so. After, he's been telling me how he's been running from these people and he's fearing for his life, and this pickup was chasing him. And he was on his way to his father's place in Pine Ridge to get a gun. I'm glad he didn't have it. But he was pretty gassed. He wanted to know if he could get up and set up on a step, and I told him I prefer if he just stayed right where he was and not moved. And he implied, he's very polite, as it turns out. My mother's then calls out after a bit, she says, Don, there's a pickup in the driveway. I don't know who it is. I'm going, oh, great, who's this? I talked, I thought about calling the neighbors who have weapons and involve them, and I decided that might be a bad idea, depending on how this might turn out. So I kind of leaned forward, and I kind of get to where I can kind of see the front door. Well, it turns out, it was your officer. And I says, well, it's the cops. I can recognize him through the small window. He kind of moved off to the side. I caught a glimpse of him as he went by. So he comes in, assesses the situation, takes the guy out. I was kind of hoping they'd just go in and out the back door because he's right there. So I asked him to take him out that way, and they did. So I walked around the front of the house, looking at the street. And I remember, the sun is down, the lights aren't on at that time of day in Thanksgiving. You look out, the pickup was setting in the driveway toward the house. There was no way to identify that vehicle. Now, I've come to recognize these vehicles over time, and they're not so stealthy when you kind of just know where they're there all the time. You just recognize them right off the bat. They could have a light bar on them, wouldn't make any difference, you can tell who they are. The captain had pulled up, and I'm assuming after this that he was on call probably, because he got, probably got called away from Thanksgiving dinner, I'm assuming. Couldn't see the detail on his car either. But when the officer came in and started questioning the guy about what he was doing and where he'd come from, he knew exactly where he'd come from. He'd come over from Lincoln Avenue. The guy's pickup was over there. They had been over there. I talked to the homeowner that called the cops at that location. That guy had run from the Lincoln Avenue termination on the old Jardine House, Mill Health. He had run across the side of Battle Mountain and happened to come down at my mother's house. That's about six blocks. That's really rough territory. Just take a hike across the side of Battle Mountain sometime, run it this way, not up or down. So as I was looking out there, my mom says, look at this. I didn't know who it was. So I waited for them to contain the guy, and he had, they had him secured in the backseat of the pickup. I walked out the front door and I asked the officer to come in and look at it from this perspective. He wanted nothing to do with it. Told the young officer, turning his camera on, and I said, I thought it should be on all the time. That's a good idea. It got a little heated. You guys probably had the video. Afterwards, my mom says, maybe they could have a car with some ID on it and some that they don't have any ID on. Then they could send the one with the ID to your house when you have a call. Oh, there's mom for you. Eighty-three years old. I don't know, folks. Every time you try to do something in life to fit two purposes, a patrol car, a stealth car, you try to do it one package, you don't do either one of them very well at all. And that's what you're trying to do. Patrol cars should be highly visible from the officers and other departments that looked at and talked to the retired and active duty. Visibility is considered a deterrent. Where we're trying to do these things, and we're tweaking the color of the letters, and we're doing all this stuff, but when they get a little dirty and there's no light, you can't read them. I don't know why you put the veterans' town thing above the fender. You can't see it unless you go looking for it. I would just hope that when you consider this, that you get these things so they're visible so the public can tell who they are and identify them. And if anybody's got any questions, they're more than welcome to ask or call me sometime. But when this first started, I thought, yeah, I can't see there. I don't really like it, but whatever. But that day in my mother's house, it hit me. The public doesn't know who their law enforcement is. And I think there are greater dangers running around these unmarked cars. Why even bother to put decals on them? Just don't put any decals at all on them. Light bars are more visible in traffic stops because they slip slightly higher than everybody else's. And they don't make any noise on the radio. You can hear the radio in them. State troopers aren't doing it. Custer County's not doing it. Rapid City's not doing it. Why are we hiding from the public that you're serving? Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions or comments?
Do you have any idea why he's running from the police pickup?
I don't think he could identify it. The officer knew where he'd come from. He knew where the pickup was. He knew where the guy's pickup was. I'm assuming that Mr. Garcia, what, had one concern when he was sitting there, and I called, and I said, I'd call them. Who'd you call? And I'm thinking, I don't want, I might call the cops. This guy's getting pissed. I finally said, I, you know, standing there with my ball retriever. I said, I called the cops. He went, oh, good. I don't, those other guys are going to kill me if they find me. They're chasing me. I ran across that mountain from over there. The next thing I heard about Mr. Garcia, he was in an attic in Rapid City on that Saturday and started a fire. And he come tumbling out of the attic, and I happened to talk to a fireman who was doing radon mitigation in my daughter's house in Rapid City that was on that call. Keep getting connected. Christmas, I get a call from the mortician in Pine Ridge. That's where he ended up. He was dead. I mean, he had other problems, but my mother couldn't identify that car, and neither could Garcia. And that's what happened.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Just a comment.
Go ahead.
Don, because you and I have spoken about this a number of times, I don't have any questions.
You talked to my mother, I know. She appreciates that too, Bob, came by and saw her.
So I just didn't want you thinking that, you know, after you shared the story, I had no interest. Because you and I have talked, I know where you're at, and I think you know where I'm at.
And she did express that a half hour ago when I told her I was going to do this. So she really appreciated you coming up on her side, so.
Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
Thanks, Valerie.
Any other communications from the public? See, none. We'll move on to personnel actions. I'd ask for a motion to approve personnel actions A and B.
I make a motion to approve personnel actions A and B. Second?
It moved and seconded to approve those personnel actions. Are any questions, comments, or discussion? Here he done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Committee reports. Admin Finance, Bob and Caitlin.
Admin Finance, Mayor Robbins, here at City Hall, at the Mueller Center. Mayor Colley, Caitlin, Bill, Misty, Greg, Chris, Ed Jensen, Rob with K O J and myself who are with me. Three old business items, the Pete Anderson mining contract that's been going on for decades now. A telephone call was scheduled for today with the FAA and Bureau of Land Management to discuss who actually owns the mining rights at the airport. That's what's under discussion right now, because does the city own or does some, BLM or whoever owns those rights? The airport manager position is discussed, how when to hire a replacement for the airport manager. Previous recommendation from Admin and Finance was to advertise the position, admit nay, and hire the individual prior to Ed's retirement. This could give Ed some time to train the new person prior to his retirement. The recommendation was to also inform the committee to review the applicants for the position. The committee discussed foregoing announcing the job position and instead hiring from within the airport staff. And that is the agenda item for us tonight. John talked with us about the heating problems at the Mueller Center. The problem, talk was about replacing the geothermal grid. A number of options were discussed, ranging from a new electric heat pump type system, a two-milling ATU boiler, geothermal vertical wells, and reconstructing the geothermal heat exchanger grid in Fall River. Least expensive option is to replace the heat exchanger grid at an estimated cost of thirty thousand dollars. The committee recommends replacing the geothermal grid and pay for the replacement with a combination of deferred maintenance costs from the Mueller Center and contingency funds. The building and placement of the heat exchanger grid would be completed by a city staff. Some new business items, Misty shared with us that they're starting the virtual audits for the city. That's begun. And the two thousand nineteen audit reports should be presented with the council at the June fifteenth meeting. We set June eighth, twelve-thirty PM at the Mueller Center for the new council to meet to canvass the election results for the June second election. Rob with K O J spoke with the committee about the addition of a ten-unit tee hangar at the airport. Typically, the design. Typically, the design and construction costs are split ninety-ten with the city's share being ten percent. The design cost for the proposed ten, uh, unit T-hanger is ninety thousand, but the city's share of ten percent would be waived. The city would still incur their ten percent share of the actual construction, construction cost of the hangar units. The current grant deadline is June fifteenth. Uh, we discussed changing the cost for water meter testing. Currently, the cost charged by the city doesn't cover the actual cost to have a meter testing. Committee recommends removing the fixed cost for water meter testing and replace it with language that states the cost of the testing will be the actual cost incurred by the city. Uh, and as previously discussed, um, from communications with the public. Kim Meyer spoke with the committee about the use of Chautauqua Park for the high school prom activities on May thirty, from, May thirtieth from seven PM to eleven PM. Uh, Kim has spoke with the American Legion's riders, uh, about providing supervision for the event and vehicles will be checked for alcohol. Appropriate COVID-nineteen social distancing will also be enforced. The Red Shed BBQ will be on site to provide food and Kim has asked anyone that has any questions about the event to give her a call. Committee recommends allowing Chautauqua Park to be used for the May thirty prom activities. The street department, um, made a request to, uh, bring back one part-time employee to help with spring cleanup work at the parks and the cemetery. And the committee is recommending allowing that one part-time employee to return, uh, to work with, uh, to help work with the parks and the cemetery. Right, Miss Anna? Uh, next Admin Finance meeting will be June eighth, one PM, uh, at the Mueller Center.
Yeah, thank you, Bob, Caitlin. Airport Advisory Committee, Bill?
Next Airport Advisory Committee meeting will be Thursday, May twenty-eighth, eight AM at the airport.
Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District, Ron?
We met May fourteenth, seven PM here at the Mueller Civic Center. First item was selection of officers was deferred to the ninth July annual meeting. Little problems there. There was a discussion on a new computer for the financial decision was made to go to the internet cloud for transactions and record backup. Contact manager for the landfill is requesting a credit card receipt. With the current situation, COVID-nineteen and permanent closing of the Custer Transfer Station, more people are coming to the fill landfill site personally. This is a cash and check operation only. Many people use, uh, credit cards and debits. Now solicit simplify and streamline the finance operation. Most was made to approve up to a four hundred dollar monthly for the machine and plan and a two percent card use charge. F M G, the engineering firm, report the stage two area is surveyed and staked out. That's for the new, new cell. Topo map is prepared for proper drainage of the rubble and animal carcass sites. The annual water testing report came back from the Department of National Resources. There were no comments or questions on it, so, good there. Also, the D N R would like financial assurance funds to be designated as accessible to D N R for site closings. Next meeting is ninth July, Mueller Civic Center, seven PM.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, Ray?
Well, we have a meeting lined up for this month, but it's canceled at the last minute by somebody. I mean, I've read a couple of emails that we need to get together. Maybe John can, can tell people why, something about. The new.
I had suggested to Brian Howard and the group that we revisit the ordinances for the historic district and the guidelines for historic districts. Since we had three new buildings that need to be replaced, suggest that we could have a meeting to talk about that in the future.
So if we have a meeting next month, I believe it'll be on the third, first Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Allison?
Evans Plunge Advisory Committee met, uh, May fourteenth at the plunge. Um, the main, uh, topic of conversation was reopening and the concerns and strategies, uh, going into that. We had set May twenty-fifth as our target date and have run into, uh, some potential barriers making that happen. Uh, this topic is across municipality pools in South Dakota and Chris has been on a Tuesday phone call that has, um, linked all municipal pools together, uh, to discuss, uh, what each pool is doing and, uh, safety measures that they're taking. One of the major barriers that we have, um, in reopening pools is social distancing, but also specific to the plunge is our mineral water. Uh, the CDC specifies bromine or chloride, chloride being used, chlorine, sorry, chlorine to be used. Um, and because we don't use either and we're a natural, uh, mineral water, we don't see at this point, the advisory committee did not see at this point how we would be able to safely open. Uh, we did just get a new update from some of the other pools that have decided to close specifically through, uh, the summer. We don't feel comfortable in making that call, um, but don't feel like, uh, the May twenty-fifth would be, uh, something that can be safely, uh, done. So at this point, um, we want to continue to meet, uh, and discuss this each week as new information comes out. Uh, our next meeting is, um, set for, uh, six eleven noon at Evans Plunge. Um, and we will be going through all of that information then, and I may have updates for you guys before that point too as, uh, Chris and I and John all work on this together.
Okay, thank you, Allison. Parks Recreation, Beautification, Cultural Development, Dave?
Wednesday the third, at one PM here at the Mueller Center, we had our meeting. Uh, the president was John Gregory, Laurie Sherard from the cemetery, Bart from the parks, uh, Gerald Culligan and myself. Uh, we reviewed, uh, what's going on in repairs as far as the parks. The Golden West crew came in on the thirteenth and started doing repairs and going through that. Uh, our city parks people and the cemetery people were going through town with them, um, in conjunction with John Gregory. Also looked at the baseball park, softball park, excuse me, discussing there is a little bit of the fence being off at two hundred and fifty feet. We have discussed, uh, they would like. If, if the world was just perfect, we'd be like at three hundred, but approaching your road, going around the park in the future, the road will have to be widened with curb and gutter hopefully. Um, and approaching that three hundred feet, we approach the road, we give us problems, issues. So that probably pretty much dropped, but we will save some, uh, feet footage as far as replacing the fence, going around it. Uh, where it extends a little farther out, but we have that realigned. And talking about some filter in certain areas of Dollar Field, um, other than that, that was pretty much it. The next meeting will be the first Wednesday of next month, one PM here at the Mueller Center.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Public Zoning Commission, Allison?
Our next meeting is five twenty, seven PM here at the Mueller Center.
Public Safety, Bill?
Next meeting is this Wednesday, the twentieth, one PM at the Mueller Center.
Public Works, Bob and Ray?
Public Works met on May twelfth. Mayor Colley, Craig, Dave, Tracy, uh, Scott, Justin O'Neal, uh, myself are present. Couple of, have four old business items. Uh, the committee discussed our previous recommendation, uh, to extend Lord Sawville through May for Hidden Lake Campground Resort due to the coronavirus. Our original recommendation was well intended, but missed the position a recommendation could put the city in. Recommending the extension for one business would obligate the city to approve other requests due to, due to an event outside of the city's control. Uh, the committee now recommends disapproving the request to extend Lord Sawville for Hidden Lake Campground and Resorts. Uh, talked with you at the last meeting about, um, the automated water meeting, meter reading equipments. Jason will continue to look at replacing or upgrading the basic equipment needed to read water meters and put together a list of upgrades to be considered by the council for the two thousand twenty-one budget year. Uh, mobile food truck, uh, mobile vending truck discussions is still ongoing. We're still gathering some, uh, information and costs. So we'll keep updating on that. Uh, as Dave had just said, uh, Golden West, uh, and their contractor have begun work to correct punctual items left over from their fiber optic project last fall. Uh, Scott, uh, was going to start working with, um, ordinance violations, uh, on Evans Street. And that got delayed due to the coronavirus. About the time he wanted to start doing that. Uh, he tells us that, uh, starting next week, he wants to again, uh, get it out and see if he can't get that taken care of. Uh, that's it. The next Public Works meeting will be May twenty-sixth, uh, one PM, uh, at the Mueller Center.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Southern Hills Economic Development, Caitlin?
I apologize in advance if I'm wrong, whatever I called the last two meetings, I think I'll have my notes in front of me. Scheduled for July seventeenth, I want to say, but time plays to to be determined.
Okay, thank you. Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, the only thing we have to report is, uh, they're going to be doing aeration of the greens this, uh, uh, spring, starting in, I believe, next week, uh, weather dependent. Uh, they're anticipating a high school golf tournament, uh, in the fall that, uh, would preclude that happening where they, when they normally do that. Volunteer Fire Department, Ron?
Next meeting is ninth of June. It's House Springs Volunteer Fire Department, seven PM.
Okay, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the second reading ordinance twelve thirteen. And that's the amendment to the, in revision of final bond schedule. Uh, the first reading was passed last, this meeting. I'd ask for a motion to approve the second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading ordinance, uh, twelve thirteen. An ordinance providing for the amendment and revision of the final bond schedule for the city of House Springs, South Dakota, ordinance violations.
Second?
They've moved and seconded to approve the second reading of ordinance twelve thirteen. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask Misty if you'd call the role?
David Burris?
Yes.
Ray Eppete?
Yes.
Bill Lukin?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Allison Ritterbusch?
Yes.
Greg Roming?
Yes.
Caitlin Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the ordinance is approved. We also have in your, uh, packages, resolution twenty twenty dash sixteen, which is a resolution to authorize the Department of Transportation, uh, to grant program funds for the Minnacotta Bridge replacement. Uh, that's a one point one five million dollar, uh, contract if awarded. Uh, there's a federal share of eighty-one, almost eighty-two percent and eighteen percent, the local share, which, uh, amounts to two hundred and seven thousand dollars and, uh, five hundred and seventy-five dollars. I would ask for a motion to approve that resolution and authorize that request.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash sixteen, a resolution to authorize a request from the South Dakota Department of Transportation grant program funds for a bridge, bridge replacement program for structure number two four two nine zero zero two nine, AKA Minnacotta Bridge. Second? Estimated cost of project, including engineering, is one point one five zero million dollars. If awarded, federal share is eighty-one point nine five percent, local share eighteen point zero five percent or two hundred and seven thousand five hundred and seventy-five. Seven dollars. Sorry.
Okay.
Need to get that back. Good catch.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I have questions. Uh, if the council approves this resolution and, uh, it's sent on to the state and they grant us the funds, do we then obligate the city to find two hundred and seven thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars?
Yeah, we're anticipating twenty twenty-three as a construction date, but yes. We still have to accept the grant, but it's not friendly nature to not accept a grant. Like, you still have that option in the book.
And then that's.
In this being a big grant, uh, there's a, a very competitive scoring basis for it. Uh, generally, uh, the, uh, ones that are awarded are the ones that have done the engineering design. We have not done an engineering design on this as yet. So, uh, I anticipate that, uh, that there won't be an immediate award of, of the grant. Uh, the, uh, bridge is, uh, if you look at the surface now, is beginning to fail and the approaches are beginning to fail. So it's something that we need to get in the queue so that, uh, future councils can, uh, hopefully get that grant and, uh, and get that bridge repaired.
Yes, and to, to Misty's comment, um, I've been reminded, um, since I've been on the council that if you apply for a grant, uh, you better be planning on accepting it.
But you still cannot accept it. It's just not a very friendly action.
And it can, my understanding is it can risk, uh, future grants. So, um, I understand the, the, the big grant process. But again, as I understand this, if the council approves it and for whatever reason, um, the state says, you know what? That is really bad bridge. Let's go ahead and replace that for, then we have to come up with two hundred and seven thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. And I've been concerned about the suspended sidewalk. Uh, and above the suspended sidewalk, there's concern about what the utilities are going to cost us when the Highway three eighty-five comes through. Uh, we have unknown expenses, um, in front of us and now we want to add an additional two hundred and seven thousand to that. That's my concern.
Yeah, any other discussion?
Uh, one, one last question, uh, actually two. Uh, is there, the, uh, Public Works, this is the first that, uh, I'm aware that we're going to be requesting this, uh, is there an immediate need or a reason that it has to happen now and it can't happen next year? When we financially may be in a, know where our, our situation is?
Recommission of funds will become available for this program, um, from the federal government. And yes, the application is due by June fifteenth for this round.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. Are you done, Bob? For some reason, I remember talking to Tracy about the bridge that we're doing now by the fire department. He was saying that he thinks the other bridges are in worse shape than the one we're doing. My comment to him was, why are we doing this one instead of the other one first? He seems to think it's, it's not a very good change.
We're doing the Jennings Bridge currently. It's a core edition rating system and it had a big grant for it also. It was started previously, like this one would start twenty twenty-three, uh, this one, Jennings Bridge was started not before that. That bridge was built nineteen forty-seven.
It actually scored higher in their rating system because of the location of our volunteer fire department and the access for those trucks to, um, yeah, fill the score for the big grant. The scoring system they use to award them is higher.
And Bob said this is the first you heard of it. You have a motion?
Well, I'm not sure that's appropriate, but, um, the state did tell us when we were discussing, uh, the Jennings Bridge, uh, that somewhere down the road, we would need to look at replacing Minnacotta also. But we haven't discussed that, so I'm just curious why now the resolution is in front of us, uh, without more detailed explanation and that was provided.
Any other discussion? Hearing none?
I have one question.
Yes, go ahead.
The, the funding, our portion of the funding from, for Jennings, very, uh, and I know we've been setting aside funds for quite some time, wh- what is the funding source?
Additional bail fact.
Uh, okay, I saw the two, one, two, five, okay, I remember the number.
Any other comments or? Hearing none, we'll consider the motion or, uh, the resolution, all votes in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's, uh, do a roll call, please.
Kay, David Burris.
Yes.
Ray Echepie.
No.
Bill Lukin.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
No.
Ron Richards.
Yes.
Allison Ritter Bush.
No.
Greg Roming.
No.
Kaylin Turner.
Yes.
You have time here.
Yeah, that would vote yes.
Um, he, he can't vote if it's to spend money.
That's true, you're right. So we, uh.
Failed.
Yes.
The motion then fails.
When is the, uh, when is the, you said June fifteenth is when it's? Can we give, uh, a little bit more information and for next council meeting and just have it spelled out better? Um, and then vote, have a look at it then as well.
Yeah, what measures are there that would be addressed by the, by the, by the state?
So, I think for me it'd be, I mean, we addressed it a little bit, but it just would be, um, for me as far as what, where would that money be pulled um, from, um, and then also, um, the, I guess, have we decided when that bridge needed to be completed, like we, do we have that date and all, you know, kind of all?
It's in board conditions.
So, so those are some of the things that I had no idea up until this today, so just some of that, a, a little bit of that background information that I'm sure, John, you have. And, um, then we can, can look at it at the next council.
Okay, uh, since that has failed, we, uh, now look, uh, on our agenda, executive session. Uh, I would ask for a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion, go into executive session?
Aye.
Been moved and seconded, go into executive session, full personnel. All votes in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Aye. No, you won't?
We got, we got a pay-per-view system there, bud.
I'll fight you.
You ever thought about solar, son?
Oh, yeah.
I know, there's a proposal, you know, here's a lot, right? You know where it's from. Yeah, I know, because the, the lifespan is not, you have to opt, but if you get a pay, it's where I would.
At this point, it's more, you said. Off set from the policy, right, because it helps. It helps office families.
Water, we're.
I'll fight you.
Get a little hot there. We got sunshine, just right, it's like, it's a little bit warmer, so it's kind of, you know. They were actually last week. They were, they said they were all old last week, something like that.
I heard, I think it was, um, oh my God, chat, maybe, I heard somebody talking about it. I seen it finally, from the island, really. Got a high area, ten buildings, I remember. We were talking about this, Jason, my, oh, that's, and Blackwater, I know. Some people, they, when they were from, I mean, these were the foundation, they don't do the whole, or, or, I'm, I'm.
I was supposed to. He's what they do.
You know, they're not.
We must be too cheap. What else is the word? But I mean, there's a large.
I don't know. Hot springs. It's literally. Just have your rocks.
Was your department being on Saturday? You want it much of a killer. I was there all day. Whether it's going over the crack tower way, why does it open like a chip scratch? Something made tracks. Yeah, it sounds like. Like right now, I'm going out with my hips on the ground.
Yeah, car over. You got it.
Well, yeah. Yeah. The old one. They feel cool. My older. You got. It went. So so it's. So it's hard enough that you can't. It was just on the back of the tires. Hard enough that. What's nice is you got it up right now. I don't know if it's gonna go away. What's true. Don't let it really do it. I just go out, what are they gonna do with this smaller? Everyone in the house on the fire. The last thing I'm gonna do is make it more obvious. As much as you can. Yeah. I am bored now. I was going. I put more than a sat for a while. I didn't see them.
That is your security. It's not all that was.
Yeah. Yeah. No, no.
So leaving us here.
I could be down up here. I don't need to talk to her. It changed scenery.
I want to know where it's. I know what you're talking about. I asked the team here, they did not.
It's okay. You ain't got much time. Six. Really retirement. You sorry, you didn't click on the phone. You got a hole over your. Have you booked her up? Right, yeah. We got a new talent.
It's often nice weather.
You leave about two or five October, two, three, four, whatever, April. Well, we get. Oh, wait a minute. The end of August? You might want to rethink that. Arizona part. Big spring was holding down there in Arizona. Of course. You gotta take your other bases apart on both the days. This is. We're gonna never change. If she has. It will get. All right. We're enjoying life. Yes, we're quick. Yeah. Our point is here. We're out of support. Take a whole lot of surgery. Take a lot of surgery. Sail. You don't have any need. It's an experience.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely. There's some kind of work or something. Yeah. In her case, where. Home central. It's tornadoes.
Yeah.
You take those fancy things. Those. It's a green. Same green. It's not seats. Little cute. Oh, yeah. Only four or five items left. Five, but depending on how long your session is.
Yeah. I don't know. Talking about that.
It's first. It's very.
I'm kidding.
Cut your weight. You're spending more money. Cut your weight. It's a little hurt. Wow.
It's a.
It is. There you go. I might not make it now. Why you tell me? You use that. Well, all the letters stand up. I think should be on there. The whole street. City. Straight person. Well, I thought the guy from the party should be certified as a. One time we did. We did have the guy from the golf course also. He was standing. It appeared.
When I started, um, Anthony. Well, Anthony Billy were. Well, not Billy, but Anthony. As soon as I certified you, that's everything. You have to. They talk to these people that nobody ever. Nobody wants to certification.
Yeah, I think very hard, man. We know, we took it.
Yeah, that's all. Yeah, somebody had said that, yeah.
Shoot, go, go for the gun. Track your big sprays. They could be going for a lot.
Now, that's a Jesus. What's that?
The reason. You won't have to worry about it. The more of the little. You know, it's all for uh. The area. I feel like. They're doing all that. Well, like that area where they're really buying. We need to take care of that. Don't look mean like they can do it like we do. Don't worry that. You know, there's no, no two. Exactly. No, they're like.
Still talking about.
Say them all. Well, yes and no. Whether they're fighting or figure out who's this. Any aides or things to be uh. To be through the city. Do you have a. Big story. In the drives. And they began to fight. They had to hold it for a while.
Again, they're thinking. Or is that something?
Well, they could have to do a big deal when words are in line. They'll think I'd like to claim their way to. You came out with. He's got pile of buildings. I mean, that if you knew. And then push. I always wanted to push a lot. Not to get the noise, but I wanted to push that back off. It's like soap all that. Clear out. Over there. We had a dozer one time. I called it down. When I was on. You call it. So that. We had that one up. I had to say that. Somebody actually years ago. Put a pile of. Four fifty years. It's kind of. Solid.
There's one column.
That was. Well, some had to. Well, they just. Actually, that's why I'm here to go try action. He friends with someone after your crash. I wasn't. They actually. Well, what they did, they would uh. Somewhere to come up. We had to. We ended up. There's still big. For all those tires dropped there. I hold a lot of them. Boil that small. Little stewed up. But I would give them all. Well, no. You know, they dropped forty two. You didn't learn golf for dead, but they did. They're. Oh, God, how are you wearing? That's razz out there. I. That's your goal. You just go. So the railroad yard best. Go back. He's kind of southeast. Go there. You're in the old lane. Be a shoulder game.
Well, I haven't turned on my timer. I just, I got some stuff.
Go. Go through down the road. Kind of footway southwest. He can't. Daddy, you gotta weigh a parker's fur.
Yeah, it seemed like one out there. Even picture. The park is that. Peach. Small.
Random.
This is what.
The way that they're developing from that point on. I can't think of that. I love it. They were trying to get geared up. Cause they have.
He affects them. I'd rather it's on the truck. The time they're ready to set up. I'm a pro. It's a broad time. If my traffic.
I'd probably say. You should give him a time line. He is. He doesn't know. He's like. He's fine. I'm talking to a Canadian. All over town. I'm just making oil and those. Well, he's. That's what he should approach. He should say, well, I'm not gonna bill you guys to. Oil it all. We should see him. See, that is. He shouldn't. He does.
I haven't seen.
Well, if he's got. What is it? They have several cars. They built. Okay. Last one.
Okay, show us reconvened at eight nineteen. Next item is item of new business, item A. And I'd ask for a motion to uh. Approve item A.
Make a motion to not advertise the upcoming airport manager position. And follow a proposed plan to hire from within. For the position with a thirty day full time. Airport manager overlap beginning July twenty eighth, twenty twenty. And ending on August twenty eighth, twenty twenty. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to uh. Hire from within for the airport manager. Are there any discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask Misty if you'd call the roll, please.
David Burris.
Yes.
Ray Echope.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
No.
Ron Richards.
Yes.
Allison Ritter Bush.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
No.
Kaylin Turner.
No.
Yakes have it.
Okay, we uh. Motion does carry. Item B, we have a possible motion discussion to authorize uh. Major to sign the Jennings bid structure agreement form. You should have a copy of that in your packages. I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the Jennings bridge structure replacement. Approach creating curb and gutter. Asfall payment and incidentals construction contract agreement form. Between the city of Hot Springs and Diesel Construction Corporation. For a contract price of one line, three hundred eighty nine thousand, nine hundred ninety nine dollars and nine cents. Project number B R O eight zero two four zero zero one eight dash one. P C M zero six V F.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. To approve uh. This uh. Agreement. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have item C, a possible motion uh. And discussion to authorize the chief of police to establish. Standardized police department vehicle color marking scheme. We've heard of that. Comments on this uh earlier. I'd ask for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to authorize the chief of police to establish a standardized. Standardized police department vehicle color and marking scheme. With concurrence by the public safety committee. For sure fitting up pre. Two thousand nineteen vehicles be done and allowed by the budget.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to uh. Establish the standardized police department uh. Color scheme. With the concurrence by the public safety committee. Are there any questions, comments, and discussion?
I talked to Mike Close today. And asked him about this. And they're moving in the right direction. It's not gonna be as dark as the pickup. But in my opinion, it needs to be a little bit lighter than what they're picking out. I think. And I made a comment something about like the hybrid twelve vehicles. The golden on the side of those. They stand out, not real much, but they stand out more. But. That's just my opinion.
Okay, any other discussion?
I have some comments. Uh, I'd like to address two things that were said during the public comment period. Um. That there's concern about um. The city wanting stealthy vehicles. These are my words, not theirs. Um. And that we're trying to hide from the public with the markings that we have on our vehicles. In my words, not theirs. That's just what I understood them to say. Um. I've spoken with both uh Wes and Don about um. The situation. And I've shared with them that uh I have supported uh the current markings from a officer's safety standpoint. I think it's our responsibility to make sure that uh our officers in particular return to their families at night. I understand that there is some difference of opinion about whether Hot Springs poses that risk or not. Uh, we certainly don't um. Have it to the same degree that merchant communities do, but uh the world is changing. Um, and Hot Springs does see things that happen in the big communities. I would never support um the markings on the vehicle to hide from the public and to be stealthy. That's not what we need to be about. Uh, and I need to emphasize again, I would never support doing it for that reason. What I do support is the uh chief of police. Uh, taking ownership of his, his own departments. Uh, and coming up with a standardized marking that he feels is appropriate. Uh, making that case to public safety and getting public safety to sign on. That's what I approve. I'm not uh here to tell them what those colors need to be uh as a councilperson. I think we begin walking the fine line uh if every time we disagree with something. Uh, a department head is doing that uh. We step in and say, well, I don't like that decision. Here's the one that you need to be making. We give them the responsibility. Need to trust that they're gonna take it seriously and make decisions and recommendations that they feel are appropriate for their departments.
Okay.
You also have to look at what the taxpayers of Hot Springs wants to. And quite a few. With the discussion that they don't like the dark stuff. And it's my understanding that it's gonna be like a, a dark gray. Like the one. Wrangle, I think that they just did last year.
And public safety, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I. And we discussed it at length in public safety a couple times. And. Because there are such varying opinions. I took a, an informal poll. Did not try to cherry pick. Uh, people that I thought might say what I thought might be the right answer because. I'm, I'm not gonna say what I think is the right answer. But I polled about thirty some people. And quite frankly, a lot of them I had to. A lot of people in town. Didn't even know what the colors of the cars were. A lot of people aren't paying attention. Some do. And some of them have been very vocal. A lot of people out there. Uh, the vast majority that I talked to. Didn't mind what the colors were. Yeah, they're, they're fine. Uh, the one comment I got that I really, it was absolutely my favorite comment is. Well, if they're trying to be sneaky, they're not doing a very good job. Referring to the new colors. So there are varying opinions. Uh, we've had extensive discussions with the police. And I agree with Bob is we. We need to let the department do what is best. We will challenge them. Uh, with questions. We'll challenge their thinking. Uh. We will either, they will make us understand or we will make them understand. Our concerns. But we need to. My issue is I want a consistent looking police department. If you pardon the expression, I don't like a dog's breakfast out there. Uh. With a bunch of different colored cars. Now, I know we probably can't afford to, to paint the older vehicles consistent. Hopefully someday they'll be retired, but uh we will work it in public safety and uh so. And we'll go from there. So when this uh motion passes.
Are there any other comments?
I'd just like to point out that the motion is to authorize them to establish a standardized vehicle color. We're not necessarily approving a specific color, but. I myself have not heard any specific comments negatively about the cars. But when I see our police department doing so much community policing, I think it's a little bit funny to hear that people think they're trying to. Or comments that they're trying to hide, because I think it's very clear that they're not.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments?
I have one comment. Um. I'd like to see the police cars look like police cars. The sheriff's department too. Uh. I don't have a problem with uh, with the law and. But I did a lot of comments, just saying, who are these people? They're sneaking around following us, don't know what they're doing. They scare us. And uh. As far as I'm concerned, a police car should look like a police car. Nothing against policemen, we love them. But the cars, you know, they, they need to be some changes.
Okay, any other comments? Misty, I'd ask that you call the roll, please.
David Burris.
Yes.
Ray Echope.
No.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Bob Nelson.
Yes.
Ron Richards.
Yes.
Allison Ritter Bush.
Yes.
Craig Romi.
I'm gonna be an asshole. Be on Facebook tonight if I'm gonna say no.
Kaylin Turner.
No.
Yakes have it.
Okay, that motion carries. Uh, we have a. Public hearing that we uh would like to set for seven uh ten P M. At the June first meeting. Uh, retail on off. Uh. Beverage license for Good Karma Couture. Morning Sunshine. Uh. They are located at five oh nine North River Street. Uh, they ask for a motion to set that public hearing.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing on June first, two thousand twenty at seven ten P M. For retail on off sale malt beverage of South Dakota. Farm wine license application for Good Karma Couture. Limited LLC doing business as Morning Sunshine to be used at five oh nine North River Street. Mr. Bear, I'll be standing from this floor.
Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been uh moved and seconded that we uh do set this public hearing. At seven ten, we will have one abstention. Are there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we also have uh the list of uh. Renewals for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one malt beverage license. I did check with the chief of police today. There's been no issues or problems with any of uh the businesses. And you will note that some of them uh have been closed as a result of uh the COVID or a fire. So I'd ask for a motion to renew these malt beverage licenses.
I make a motion to renew the following twenty twenty, twenty twenty one malt beverage licenses. American Legion post number seventy one, Big Bats LLC, Big Time Pizza. BH Pizza Hut. Buffalo Dreamer Restaurant LLC, China buffet incorporated. Do, do business as Winter Circle, Dakota Mart Inc, D B A. Dakota Mart Convenience. Dolgin Midwest LLC, do business as Dollar General Store. G two Lawn Service, do business as the Ball Frankie's Place LLC. MG Oil Company, do business as Corner Pantry Number eleven A and eleven B. Sanchos Bar and Grill, Southern Hills Golf Course, Spring Steakhouse, and Louis Western Grill.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to uh approve the uh malt beverage licenses. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you have our Finance Officer report, Misty?
Thank you, Mayor. These financial reports are through the thirtieth of April. Since I took so much time at the last meeting to go over our two thousand nineteen numbers, these are a little late getting to you. I would highlight the profit and loss summary report by fund. Our discount sales tax fund is down about forty thousand dollars this time last year. And the Business Improvement District and Evans Pond are the other two that I would note significantly down from prior years. The fund summary budget to actual reports, I would point out that you are about twenty-five percent through the year as you review those revenue and expenditures numbers. So by the end of April, we've completed one quarter of our year. We had a discussion at our last Admin Finance meeting about potentially doing some more quarterly updates. So as you look at those, you can think about that. The cash balance reports, just for our main account Wells Fargo. And then your investment reports by institution and type cover all the assets of the city. And I would just point out on our certificates of deposit that our water debt service reserve CD at First Interstate Bank is maturing June thirtieth. I will be visiting with the Admin Finance Committee and then this council prior to the maturity and give you the current rates and we'll make a selection on what to do with those funds when they come due. I discovered a little bit in my written report about where we're at with our two thousand nineteen audit. The audit should be presented at the June fifteenth council meeting. As the nearest past, we'll meet one hour before the regularly scheduled meeting to engage in a detailed review. You're not required to be there, but you're invited and we'll have this available by Zoom. Our auditors won't be present, but we'll join in that way and that will allow members of the public interested to hear the more detailed report if interested. And then a very shortened version or abbreviated version will be reviewed during the council meeting. Mayor Cady asked that I begin making future projections based on incoming sales tax results. I've chosen to also include in my projections other revenue sources identified as being specifically vulnerable to shortfall due to the pandemic. These include Recreation Library, the Mueller Center, the Southern Hills Golf Course, and Evans Pond Mineral Springs. A review and analysis of April year-to-date sales tax revenue actually shows a minimal increase over the prior year in both the general sales tax, which is up three point five percent, and our gross receipts tax, which is up two point one. Summer Recreation is projecting the loss of nearly a hundred percent or ninety-five hundred dollars of projected revenue. Significant personnel cost reductions will help offset this loss. Library year-to-date revenue collection is already at sixty-five percent of budget projections. This is due to both the yearly card renewals and the increased rate for out-of-town cardholders, which we didn't know about when we planned our budget. Mueller Center revenue collected is about the same as it was this time last year, but bookings in the future are sparse and there's been a number of cancellations. You're seeing some refunds and your approvals of bills. The golf course is down a little over one percent from this time last year. The condition is the expenses are down thirteen percent from this time last year. They have had some tournament cancellations this year. Evans Pond is currently suffering from the largest revenue shortfall. They're down over forty-nine percent or forty-eight thousand dollars. In comparison, expenses in total are only down about a thousand dollars from this time last year. I'll continue to monitor and report on these numbers to you. Our two thousand twenty-one budget planning meetings, since Billy be talking about that already as we're just wrapping up two thousand nineteen with our audit, but we do begin those in late July. And I will be requesting that we start these meetings with a review of the two thousand twenty budget estimates and compare that to year-to-date actuals. So more to come on scheduling that. I also wanted to mention that we remain hopeful that the financial economic assistance already provided to our state from the U.S. government will be authorized for use or distribution at the municipal level to help cover revenue losses incurred as a result of the pandemic. We know that at this time, the CARES Act funds cannot be used for this purpose, but when and if additional resources become available, we will be ready to apply for and receive them. We've set up a project code to track expenses directly related to COVID-nineteen and have gotten word from the governor that those types of expenses can be refunded. What we're working for, hoping, is that they'll also release some of those funds to help with revenue losses. We've begun talking about reopening plans throughout the city. Ordinance twelve twelve, if not renewed or extended, expires at the end of this month. City staff is planning on how getting back to business looks for each of our departments. We'll be meeting Wednesday morning to discuss this a little bit more. Council will be prepared as we move closer to reopening to see additional expenses related to things like plexiglass dividers, hand sanitizing stations, gloves, masks, maybe thermometers, floor markings, additional signage, et cetera. Although we are sensitive to budget constraints, we feel it's vital to do all we can to protect our employees and citizens by taking additional safety precautions. City reemployment benefit assistance paperwork has been steadily rolling into the office. I provide you some information and statistics that I learned by listening to Marshall Holtman from the Department of Labor and Regulations at a recent press conference. She said their office processed in excess of twenty-seven thousand claims in one week. As a reminder, May eighteenth is the deadline for voter registration for the June second municipal election. Absentee voting runs through the first of June and it is being encouraged as state and local officials. If a voter has questions or concerns, they can contact the Fall River County Auditor's Office. At the first meeting in June, we'll schedule a special meeting. Bob talked in his Admin Finance Report that we're looking at Monday, June eighth, at twelve thirty. It will be here at the Mueller Center to canvass our election results and declare the results by resolution. It listed some of the identified ordinance revisions we're still working on. Please review those if they are being discussed in one of your committees. If you could ensure that you're moving forward on those. The budget training has been canceled, the onsite budget training for two thousand twenty, but SDML has chosen to offer the training free to anyone interested in attending virtually. I sent that out to the council members today. Please let me know if you're interested. And the elected official workshop has been rescheduled for Wednesday, September second in hopes that it can be held in person. So save that date if you are interested in attending. I apologize for length of this update as well. There's much going on and I thank you for your time.
Okay, thanks, Misty. John, City Administrator update, please.
Good evening.
Could you get the mic this far?
Good evening. We did finally get Mass Transfer Segment Agreement with DOT Joint Powers Agreement. We're fortunate that the Commission approved two point eight million dollar funding. That was a big hurdle that a lot of people have been working on for a long time. Now we begin the more aggressive discussion on Joint Powers Agreement concerning highway construction. That's going to be the focus of attention for many of us the next week or so that we'd like to get back to the Commission at the end of this month. The DOTs also began their joint and crack seal project on University. That was one of the things we agreed to in the Transfer Segment Agreement that we want to get this new pavement ready for us to take over. We've been up and down that road and they're doing a good job replacing a lot of the broken panels that they've been concerned about. Jenny Bridge Project is getting near to start. We need to be discussing in public works if we want to delay their July start or if we'd like to go ahead and proceed because it will impact tourism that will kick back in. The Menacotta Bridge Project is a future project, but it's part of that Highway Infrastructure Program funds. We wanted to get with the resolution on a replacement list. The actual grant process will be more in-depth than just a resolution. The city streets, parks, and maintenance and cemetery folks have been ramping up mowing activities, doing seasonal preparations at the cemetery on Memorial Day. And they've also got all the various street lights fixed throughout the city. Right now, we're getting a suspended sidewalk in Berry. We're looking at some expanded grant opportunities for the follow-up channel improvements that can be fully grants. We'll have to discuss and approve before we proceed on them. DOT Transportation Alternative Funding System, give you a maximum of four hundred thousand, but again, it's got an eighteen point oh five max requirement. And that's how we get rid of cattails and get all the nice concrete bulk weight done in the river. There are smaller grants through the National Park Service, but they're also an eighteen percent type grant, smaller amounts. Airport improvements were discussed. We've got the design services for the T hangar taxiway presented by K L J, a ninety thousand dollar project. This one has a hundred percent FAA funding on this go-round, but the city will be committed to future investment when it comes time to build those T hangars. We are revising with BLM and FAA proposed sand gravel mining. The meeting we were expecting today, BLM was not present to participate with that. It has been postponed until later in the week. They still do not have an answer on that yet. I did take the time to make a site visit to our airport and see the hay, hay areas and grazing properties at the airport, which I had never seen up close. All these interest requests have been dead. And I got an overview of how the English oil irrigation system is installed. We've got the ongoing discussions of the COVID-nineteen economic impact to our city and how do we reopen our city upon expiration or extension of the COVID-nineteen ordinance. We do have some unique apartments. Evans Pond is not chlorinated water, so it doesn't meet the sanitation requirement. The Mueller Center has a very small staff, so cleaning up reasonably after everybody comes through, we require a larger staff. The library has lots of hand-on services that can all be cleaned. With West at the golf course being outdoors, it is difficult to maintain a hundred percent social distancing after the golf course, the fair, leagues, and bounds ahead of the other departments and addressing the situation. Lastly, I learned all about swigs today and hope to get rid of them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. As far as my reporting goes, I just want to share with you a little bit about the Transportation Commission meeting that I attended via telephone from a Capitol News Bureau summary of it. Basically, the headlines read that Hot Springs will get two point eight million dollars in one mile of U.S. Highway eighteen from the South Dakota Department of Transportation. And the legislature next year will have to be involved in the route currently known as U.S. eighteen B, which is our bypass around the south end of the city. Well, then officially, the legislature will designate that as becoming U.S. eighteen. The Commission members did meet in executive session for about an hour discussing the project. And they agreed, the initial, they agreed to become responsible. We had indicated that we agreed to be responsible for a part of U.S. eighteen in return for the state giving the two point eight million dollars. The presumption, of course, being that we would be building a suspended sidewalk. Secretary Berwick has mentioned that it was a compromise agreement. He also mentioned it's a larger effort by our Governor Kristi Noem's administration to make Hot Springs a veterans' town of the United States. And Mike Beam also testified at that meeting. He's the Director of the Department as Planning Engineering. And he also identified that the Department of Transportation would be responsible for the two bridges over Garden Street and the Fall River went into detail describing that. The Chairman, Mike Beal, who is Chairman of the Commission, asked about the condition and cost of redoing the stretch of Highway U.S. eighteen. Mr. Beam identified that the segment was in very good condition, a score of four point three six on a scale of zero to five. And he estimated the surface would last at least another thirty years or so. Rebuilding one mile of four-lane highway would cost about five million to six million dollars today's dollars. I also had the opportunity to testify. I made sure that the Commission knew that the pro sidewalk would improve our safety and helped improve our downtown district by providing a gathering area and a needed boost for the three-loss businesses that we had due to the fire. I told them that the city had decided that we were willing to take over the maintenance of University Avenue and that the overall project would be a real benefit to our small committee. The Commission then did vote nine to zero to accept the jurisdictional transfer. They wished us good luck and I thanked the Commission for their vote and said we look forward to making Hot Springs better as a result of that. So that was a big victory for us and a lot of hard work, a lot of compromise with the Department of Transportation. I really appreciate them working with us. That could have been, they could have just said no and held to their guns. I appreciate the efforts of the council and particularly our city staff on getting the facts and doing a good job of researching. But that leaves us with two very important priorities that need to get done here very quickly. And that's getting our design engineering firm on contract. And that will be a decision that the council will have to make now that we do have that funding guaranteed. And likewise, we need to finalize, as John was speaking, about that Joint Powers Agreement for the construction. And that also includes the utilities project being added to that along with the suspended sidewalk and the actual construction of the highway. I would like to ask Bob if you, John, and Tracy would take the lead on that. Beam, that you are the Chairman of Public Works and will be the upcoming mayor. It's important that you get involved in ensuring that those items get done. And we need to make sure that we have an agreement that we, as a city, can live with. I know there's been some ongoing discussions. I've gotten a couple of phone calls, Allison, concerning plunge opening and the safety concerns. So that's something that we'll have to keep our eye on and look at. Obviously, we do have a vulnerable population. Many even of our members are high-risk and certainly with the high-risk facilities that we have in the community. If anyone does get ill and takes that COVID-nineteen into, say, the state home or Pine Hills or another place, we put a lot of high-risk people in a vulnerable position. So we'll watch, have to watch that very closely. Finally, I'd like to discuss, we did have, I did attend a telephone conference with the Governor today. The main subject of that was how to disburse that one point two billion dollars COVID-nineteen relief package that the federal government has given to the state of South Dakota. There's a lot of restrictions on how that money can be spent. And right now, those restrictions only include reimbursable expenses. We, as a community, don't have many reimbursable expenses. They would be... They would be things like the P P E, cleaning supplies, and that sort of thing, and I doubt whether we could rustle up a hundred dollars or that of reimbursable expenses. But our community is greatly impacted by this pandemic, by the loss of sales tax revenues that we've gotten. I did ask the question, and there was a lot of concern by myself and other mayors, I did ask the question, how do we overcome the lost revenue for Evans Plunge? Small businesses get federal aid in recovering from this situation, but we don't. And the governor's been working very hard with the congressional delegation to see if we can get reimbursable expenses for things like the lost revenues. And I've asked Misty to begin projecting future revenues for our planning purposes so that we can get an idea of our deficiencies more than just a guess. And again, particularly, I'm concerned about Evans Plunge, the fact that we've got to make loan payments on that, and we don't have, we aren't taking in any money this summer very well. So what we will have to do, and at the suggestion of the governor, is to let our congressional delegation know and see if there can be some funds released for revenue replacement for small communities like ours and many other tourism communities in the Black Hills that would be affected by that. So Misty, I've asked her to draft a letter to review the current situation, and we'll send that letter to all three of our congressional delegates to ensure that they are aware of the need to get that revenue replacement as a part of that money coming down. It's going to be strictly audited, strictly looked at, and we desperately need that to ensure that we get that payback for the loss of revenue that we are, we're having, that would greatly reduce the impact on our community and make next year's budget process a lot easier. With that, that summarizes my report, and I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.